Mrs. Cullen, we're ready when you are.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order, but before we get started, I just wanted to take a moment to remember Bob Keeler, who passed away on September 10th. Bob was a reporter for the News Herald, who was assigned to covering school news, so he attended our meetings regularly. He was dedicated to his work and approached it with true journalistic integrity. You could count on Bob to cover an issue in an objective way, presenting just the facts. He had a quiet, understated presence at our meetings, but he left a big mark on our community. He will be missed, may he rest in peace. And if everybody will please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Channell, if you can, go please. Mrs. Bass-Clements?
Here.
Ms. Batuski?
Here.
Mrs. Blomgren?
Here.
Mrs. Chaken?
Here.
Mr. Cormack?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
And Mr. Worsky? Thank you. Alright, so we're going to move on to public comment, and I will read our public comment statement. According to Policy 903, public comment, which is limited three minutes, should be directed to the presiding officer rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. For confidentiality and privacy rights, specific comments regarding particular individuals must be communicated privately to the school board and superintendent via email at PSD School Board at Penridge.org. And so I will call everyone up, just remember when you come on down.
Hey Jim, I just wanted to make a little announcement about what's going on. I want to start discussing by discussing an observation from a previous meeting. Over the past year or so, we've had a lot of division in the community. We're hoping to bridge that gap, but we need everyone's help. Everyone who comes up here to speak needs to be treated with respect. During one meeting, a few people yelled out "homeschool" after a resident spoke. This kind of childish behavior has no place at a school board meeting, and only further divides the community. Please keep these sarcastic comments to yourself. Imagine if your children behaved like this, I don't think it would make you proud. However, I do understand why there's so much anger over the board. I get their frustration when they pour their hearts out, and all they get is a blank stare and occasionally verbal feedback. They probably feel like their child is being attacked and they are being ignored. I know that I would act just as angry if I felt my family was being attacked. This does not excuse the behavior, but I see the frustration and lack of response we as a board provide in meeting settings, not email, we can return those very well. So I understand why you're upset, but remember, it may feel good to unload, but it sets back any attempt at compromise.
Okay, when you come down to the microphone, just state your name and your municipality, or if you're an employee, just state that, okay? The first person signed up is Mike Mignone.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Bolton. My name's Mike Mignone, ninth grade wellness teacher representing the Health and Phys Ed Department. The last policy meeting, the slide was presented recommending the health requirement for graduation to become half-credit in Phys Ed for one credit. We also heard some board members mentioning student choice for ninth grade Phys Ed. That's why our department's here tonight, because we do not believe that this proposal is in the best interest of our student body. First concern we'd like to address is the recommended removal of the health component of Wellness B. Our department firmly believes that all high school students should have exposure to health classes at least twice in a Penridge high school career. Eliminating the health component Wellness B and adding it to the ninth grade curriculum would result in minimally covering the necessary content or completely removing valuable health topics. So essentially, this equates to eliminating 45 classes of health instruction. Second concern we have is in regards to student choice. We do see a place for students to select their own Phys Ed courses. This is why we have created electives for the 10th through 12th grade student. Currently, our ninth grade program provides areas of choice and exposes them to a variety of activities embedded throughout the curriculum. In return, this provides ninth grade student with foundation guiding them to make an educated selection of their future Phys Ed elective classes, as well as lifelong fitness decisions. Our department also perceives if ninth grade students are allowed to select their own Phys Ed courses, facility and equipment issues would be difficult to near impossible to accommodate all the classes held throughout the school day. So based upon this information mentioned, our department recommends to continue to provide ninth grade wellness for one credit, graduation credit, as well as continuing with a half-graduation credit for Wellness B. And at last, we'd like to recommend that the continuing of our Phys Ed electives remain available for student choice above and beyond the one and a half graduation requirement. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And next, we have Tom Nunaviler.
Tom Nunaviler, he's Rock Hill and Health and Phys Ed teacher at the high school. I'm going to continue with what Mike had said. Serious concern about our health curriculum going from currently 135s to 90 days. Not too many years ago, it was 150, dropped to 135, and now going to 90. So that's a serious concern that we have as a group. Question for everyone in here, how's your mental health? How's your mental health been over the last couple of years? I see mental health as a huge concern across the board, our society, our student body, huge concern. But just look at the examples that we have from our adults in our society. Look at the politicians, Democrats don't like Republicans, Republicans can't go along with Democrats, turn on a TV commercial, and you got one politician complaining about another politician, the next commercial is flip-flop, the same two people going after each other. I wonder why we have bullying in our schools, I wonder why we have bullying in our society, I wonder why kids get social bully on social media. I know some people refer to it, it's just Phys Ed, it's just health, and I'm just a health and Phys Ed teacher, but I stand in front of kids every single day, and I see, I can look in their eyes, I can see their faces, sometimes I can read their body language, and I know there are kids that are really struggling with life, really struggling with their mental health, and I do not think that this is a time to condense, cut, shorten up. I know I talked at school board meeting last year, and there was even discussion of, hey, let's maybe even add on, because we know how important the mental health component is and our health is. It's real-life stuff, it's tangible stuff, it's stuff that kids are going to use throughout their lifetime. Technology, you know, everyone's got a laptop in front of them, students have laptops in front of them all day long, our subject area, Health and Phys Ed, they get a brain break, they get a real brain break. They get to, if they're in the gym, get to run around, do something, have some fun, a little social time. If they're outside, get some fresh air, get some exercise, it's all great stuff. One of my takeaways, we're currently in our mental health unit for my ninth grade classes right now, is talk. If you are struggling, talk to somebody, don't keep it to yourself. If you are a student, and you're doing okay, but you have that kid in your social studies class that is struggling a little bit, and you saw him post something, tell somebody about it. Tell a teacher, go to a guidance counter, I'm concerned about a friend. So that's my big takeaway, I say it over and over again in class. So I'm going to kind of take my own advice, and I'm standing up for my students that are struggling mental health-wise, and I'm going to say, please consider not making that decision to cut to 90, 90 days, and please consider maybe even adding one, because the importance of mental health in our program. Thank you.
Next is Kathy Lockery.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Lockery, and I stand before you wearing three hats. I'm a Health and Phys Ed teacher at North Middle School. I'm a very proud parent of three Penridge graduates, and I am a Bedminster resident. I started teaching in the district in 1993, and I have had the great opportunity to teach both health and physical education at all three of our levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. I did take some extended time off to raise our daughters at home, but I have not been idle in serving our community. I have coached in some capacity, either for Penridge or for our local youth organization, Deep Run, for 25 of the last 30 years. I am passionate about our children's wellness, their physical, social, and emotional wellness. Due to my longevity with the district, I have witnessed a substantial decline in time spent teaching our Penridge students in the Health and PE classrooms. In just the past eight years, two of which I served as the K-12 Health and Phys Ed Coordinator, Penridge has cut the following. We have cut the second grade swim program, the seventh grade Health and Wellness, Health and Phys Ed, that has been changed from a Health and Wellness course to just 10th grade aquatics and 10th grade health and 10th grade aquatics has now been cut. Time spent teaching health in the elementary classrooms has been reduced. Due to general scheduling issues, the sixth grade PE classes were changed to a semester instead of a year-long course. I firmly believe that exercise and movement over an extended period of time have greater impact and benefit for the child. Many students do not participate in movement activities and will not exercise their bodies once their middle school semester of wellness has been completed. Obesity and type 2 diabetes rates are climbing with our youth, our mental health is declining, these are just facts. More time has been lost with our students, as the graduation requirement for Health and Phys Ed has been reduced from two credits to one and a half in the high school. 10th grade health contains 45 classes of critical material regarding mental and emotional health, first aid, drug abuse, addiction, and more. These lessons are designed for the intellectual and emotional maturity of a 10th grader. These 45 classes cannot be indebted or added into the already full ninth grade health curriculum with any type of fidelity. We are beholden to follow the state standards, but more importantly, we are passionate about doing what is best for our students. A child's health is priceless, and the skills and knowledge gained regarding their health will be invaluable throughout their entire life. I respectfully ask that you carefully reconsider any more time lost in the Health and Phys Ed classroom. Thank you.
Next is Melinda Griffin.
Hi, I'm Melinda Griffin, I work at North Middle School, and I have the misfortune of following Kathy Lockery to speak, but I do want to talk a little bit about two things. Number one, the choices at the ninth grade level. We use a team teaching model, we use it in the middle school as well, so there's two teachers that are in that classroom. You already have the ability to implement choice at the ninth grade level in the current format that you're using. If you were to go to something like a, it was described to us, kids make three choices, you know, you can do it as team sports, individual, you run the risk of pushing away kids who might normally engage in some of those activities in their current structure. So for example, if five, 60 kids in front of me, and they can visually see where their friends are going, they know they're not going to be outskilled at a particular sport, if you divide your class in such a way that you give them options within their current group, you can still meet what you're trying to do without over-engineering and having these kids locked into something for 90 days, then it may not exactly be the right fit for them. And I find when we do that at the middle school level, it's very engaging, and they embrace it a little bit better. The other thing I wanted to address is, I was on the Curriculum Innovation and Design Committee from like day one, and I've enjoyed my time listening to Heidi Hayes Jacobs and Ben Akalek, and I know we've invested a lot of time and money in having those ladies come down and explain to us how to write rich and, you know, very developed curriculum, and use authentic assessment. If you take the current 10th grade health curriculum and try to put that in with the ninth grade curriculum, it's not going to work. We did it at the middle school when we lost our 90 days with the seventh graders, you have to go through the process of sorting out what it is you want to keep, and that really takes a couple of years to get that right. And then you're skimming the surface, and you can't really get any deep and authentic assessment. You can't do the things that these ladies are bringing us in and trying to teach us how to do. And then as Mike mentioned, it changes the whole structure of what you look like in the gym with scheduling issues. So I really am encouraging you to please keep the health in the 10th grade level, so the last time we don't talk to these kids about any health topic is when they're like 14 or 15 years old. Because these 16, 17-year-old, 18-year-old kids, they're going to need some advice too. And it's nice to have that conversation with somebody who does this for a living. You know, I know parents do that, but it's different, talking to your kids about some of the topics that we actually discuss, you know, at that higher level. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, Mike D'Ortuzos.
Hi, my name is Mike D'Ortuzos. I'm a high school social studies teacher here at Penridge, and I'm here to speak about the proposal of dropping social studies graduation requirements from four to three credits. Under our current model, eighth grade teaches Foundations of America, which goes from 1492 to 1800. Our ninth grade course is Early American History, which goes from 1800 to pre-World War I. And our 10th grade course is Modern American History, which goes from World War I to the present. 11th grade is World History and Culture, and 12th grade is a half-year of American Government and a half-year elective. In order to meet the state standard, which includes geography, economics, government, world history, and American history, the department will be forced to compact classes at the high school. The result will be one year of US history from 1850 to the present in ninth grade, 10th grade will be world history, and 11th grade would be a half-year of government and half-year elective. The goal of high school is to create engaged citizens, and this new model would be taking away opportunities to learn specific skills necessary to be an active member in our democratic society. An example of a topic that will be affected under this new model in our Modern American History course would be our World War II unit, which currently is about six weeks and 30 lessons long. Within that unit, we conduct an atomic bomb assessment, where students will research, write a paper, and engage in a seminar, usually taking about four to six lessons. Skills in this assessment include research, critical thinking, reading, writing, public speaking, and presenting. Skills that will carry over to other courses and will be used well after they leave Penridge, no matter what their career path goes. PA state standards that are also addressed in this assessment include 8.9.6.9, which is writing arguments focused on discipline-specific content, 8.6.9.C, which is producing clear and coherent writing, in which the development, organization, and style are appropriate to task, purpose, and audience, 8.3.U.P.S., which is evaluating how continuity and change have impacted the United States, and 8.3.U.P.D., evaluating how conflict and cooperation of groups and organizations have influenced the growth and development of the United States. Feedback from students include that students often refer to this as one of their favorite learning experiences from throughout the year. Looking at history curriculums out there on the United States that currently are 1850 to the present, this is what I imagine our new course to be, a World War II unit that consists only of 12 lessons. This would be surface-level learning and information with minimal to no rigor. Teachers would conduct direct instruction, students would memorize and recall information for a test, and then students would forget the information. Minimal to no amount of time to engage in authentic projects and activities requiring higher-level thinking and learning, and no time for things such as an atomic bomb assessment. It will be difficult to do every time period and unit justice under this model. In conclusion, for many students, Penridge may be the last time in their lives where they have an opportunity to take a history course. We want to make sure that all students are leaving the high school with as many opportunities possible to develop the skills to be an active and informed citizen. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, I'm Monica Parker, and since I started teaching at Penridge, I've participated in revisiting social studies curriculum every year for the past 18 years. Each time, I have observed an ever-present challenge that includes the fact that as time progresses, the amount of history we have to teach grows longer, not shorter. The thought of having even less time to teach more history is always a pressing concern for us. I can't help but worry that a consequence of lowering the credit requirements for students might result in a curriculum that has been diluted of substance as well as rigor. In recent years, we've spent a large amount of time and resources writing our current scope and sequence. Many of us have only just recently gotten our most recent curriculums approved, or are still in the process of finalizing our most recent work. I think many of us were looking forward to implementing newly-created authentic assessments that might no longer be relevant as a result of any major changes to social studies credit requirements. These gains have come after several years of working closely with experts hired by the district to help us align our current curriculum with PA state standards, the high school English curriculum, as well as the middle school curriculum. Adjusting this in any major way would likely impact other groups outside of the high school social studies department, including the middle schools, as well as the high school English department, which works very closely with our department in developing or designing rather many of our courses. Please consider revisiting the topic after further exploration.
Next is Tim Deuce.
Madam President, can you defer to Cosnell Nash prior to me speaking?
He wants me to switch places.
My name's Bob Cosnell, I'm a social studies teacher here at the high school. I'm also a Silverdale Borough resident, I have one child in district, and I have another one that's going to be joining us next year. Moving from four credits to three credits in social studies would have a serious implication on the students who take advanced placement courses within the social studies department, especially students who take AP US history and AP world history. We will see our AP world and AP US enrollment numbers drop, and our test scores drop, the Penridge drops in three credits. Let me repeat myself, we will see our numbers drop and our scores drop. Let me explain how. Currently, students take two years of American History in high school. In their second year, when the students are in 10th grade, AP is offered as an alternative to traditional 10th grade US history course, so they don't have to take AP as an elective. If we redesigned our courses based on three credits, we would offer one year of American History in high school, which would be in ninth grade. Therefore, Penridge students who want to take AP US history would have to take it in ninth grade or as an elective. Either option puts our students at a disadvantage. Taking AP US history as a ninth grader is not age-appropriate for the vast majority of our students. The challenges and coursework demands of AP US history are well-known, and throwing it at them at such a young age would be setting many of them up for failure. As an effect, we will see our AP scores drop, these ninth graders are not ready to take AP US history. In addition, many students wouldn't take it, because they would be aware they are not ready for it in eighth, no, I'm sorry, ninth grade. AP US history is the second most popular AP course in the nation, and this decision would make it one of the least popular courses to take at Penridge. If students were focused, I'm sorry, if students were forced to take it as an elective, students will have to take American History ninth grade, who still take American History ninth grade, and this group of students would be more limited in the elective safety takes than safe to take AP US history as an elective. This goes against a very objective board members have stated for switching to three credits, by creating flexibility. However, we'd be dropping our AP world course to 10th grade. Currently, AP US history sets students up for success in AP world history. We would have a greater number of students who wouldn't have the coursework of AP US history, and we'd therefore see our AP world scores drop. In summary, please consider the implications of this decision on all of our students. I respectfully request that you table this decision and allow it to be discussed at a curriculum meeting as originally planned, so we can have a more thorough examination into the impact that this decision will have on our students by hearing from our administration team and our teachers. Thank you.
And so Steph Nash wanted to speak next.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Nash, and I've been a social studies teacher here at Penridge for 24 years. I'm here tonight to discuss the proposal to reduce the number of social studies credits from four credits to three credits. Reducing the credit requirement from four to three years would be a huge detriment to our students. Social studies classes teach the importance of critical thinking skills. We're the one area in which non-fiction reading and writing are essential to our discipline. Our students learn to evaluate primary sources, analyze viewpoints, and apply to real-world scenarios. While all of our classes will be impacted, I'd like to focus on three curriculum areas, the Humanities, 21st Century Learning, and Social Science classes. The Humanities course, which is offered in ninth grade, is taught cross-curricularly with English. This class was created in order to provide more differentiation for our gifted students, so the district could be in better compliance with Chapter 16 of Pennsylvania law. Without this course, we would not have as many opportunities for gifted students to have differentiated instruction. The second course, the 21st Century Learning, was also developed cross-curricularly with our English department. The class was designed with our VOTAC students in mind. They were taught the importance of being a citizen in the US and the responsibilities that go along with it. Many of our VOTAC students would not have this opportunity if we were to eliminate a fourth year of social studies. The last group of classes that I'd like to speak on is our Social Science electives. As a psychology teacher, I have been amazed by the ability of our seniors to apply their skills learned from ninth to 11th grade to situations that are new to them. As most of these students have not had the opportunity to explore social sciences, eliminating a fourth year requirement would dissuade many of our students from taking this opportunity, as they'd rather take a study hall or have early release. According to the Executive Director of the American Political Science Association, "Social science makes sense of the institutions that shape our lives." This is another reason that is important that our students have as many opportunities and requirements to take social studies classes. In addition, social science is a huge avenue for job opportunities, of which many students are not aware. Having them exposed to these classes will only provide more direction for these students as they begin to choose life paths. In conclusion, I would ask that the board either vote to maintain the four-credit requirement for social studies this evening, or postpone the decision so the social studies department has the opportunity to discuss this monumental curriculum change with the Policy Review Committee and Curriculum Committee, so the district can make the decision that is in the best interest of our students. Thank you very much.
Tim Deuce, social studies teacher. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Deuce, and I've had the privilege of teaching social studies at Penridge High School for 23 years. In addition to teaching social studies at Penridge High School, I'm also proud to be a Penridge graduate, class of 85. My wife, also a Penridge graduate, and I call Perkasie our home. We are proud that both our daughter and son were Penridge graduates. Both our children are now raising their families inside the Penridge community, and as such, two of our grandchildren are now students at Grass Elementary. So what I say tonight is from the perspective of a social studies teacher, but it is also that of a grandfather, who wants what's best for his grandchildren. Yes, it's true that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania allows for school districts to have a minimum of three years of social studies in order to graduate from high school. However, the Penridge community, through the policies implemented by the Penridge Board of School Directors, has always seen the benefit of including an additional year of social studies for our high school students. Who else believes that is good for four years of social studies high school? First, both the national and state standards for social studies recommend that a high school contain a four-year program of study in the social sciences. As such, the professional staff has spent a great deal of time creating and maintaining a four-year program of study for our students. Second, the National Council of Social Studies, this organization is the premier association that is devoted to supporting social studies education in the United States. This association recommends that a high school social studies program contain two years of American history, one year of world history, and one year that contains both American government and a social studies elective. Finally, the last point I would like to make is that many times, our institutions compare what they are doing to what others are doing. Most, I'm sorry, most school districts in Bucks and Montgomery Counties see the wisdom of a four-year curriculum in the social sciences. As such, these districts have implemented such programs in their districts. So as I conclude, I ask this Board to take some additional time to consider this decision. I ask that this action you are considering to be tabled tonight and be sent back to the appropriate committee or committees for further review. We, the social studies teacher at the secondary level, would welcome being a part of the discussion at the committee level to express in greater detail, greater detail, why a change such as the one that's being proposed tonight is not in the best interest of our students and our community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. And next is Adam Bensick, please.
Adam Bensick, East Rock Hill. So I am, I'm going to start by saying I did write this comment by myself. I am concerned about the first read policies that are being forced through tonight. I believe the advocacy policy will have a chilling effect on teacher speech. The resource policy takes power out of the librarian's hands. The librarians are the ones who know the books. They know the nuances and the benefits the books have to the students. I believe a lot of high schoolers are mature enough to deal with the occasional sexual situation in a book. If you don't believe yours is, there are procedures on the books to keep them from checking books out without depriving other students of their value. Seems like these policies are solutions looking for problems that don't exist. We saw an example of this in a recent policy committee meeting, when one of the school board members cited the outcry from parents regarding the GSA Day of Silence. Even though this has been done for many years, this year there was so much pushback that they needed to change policies because of it. The many parents who complained, it was eight people, and four of the people don't have kids in the, don't have kids in the district. So, not sure why, where the disruption was in the classroom to necessitate a policy change. There's so much time being spent on these policies that could be spent talking about, talking with a history teacher just about the change in, the change in graduation requirements. Finally, I have a question as to where the directive came from to cut short, ban book week. I was wondering if it came from the administration or if it came from the Board. Thank you.
Chloe Kircher.
Hello, my name is Chloe Kircher, and I live at, in Percasie, and I am a 10th grade student at Penrich High School. I'm here to speak tonight regarding the proposed changes outlined in School Board Policy 217 for credit requirements for Penrich High School students beginning with the class of 2026. By potentially decreasing the wellness credit, the health curriculum will lose 45 days of instruction that could include important topics such as mental health. Monday through Friday each week, students come into school with their backpacks resting on their shoulders. This backpack holds all the things that the individual needs for their school day, including pencils, folders, and laptops. But, every student also carries a second backpack on their back. This backpack is even more important than your school bag, but there's one catch: it's invisible. This invisible backpack doesn't hold pencils or laptops, but instead holds the emotional weight that each one of us carry every day. We carry a variety of diverse items which make our backpacks obtain different weights. A student's bag could hold getting a bad grade, where to sit at lunch, not having enough food at home, not having a good friend to rely on, not having adults supporting their life, struggling with body insecurity, grief for a loved one, depression, anxiety, or mental lows. A backpack full of mental burdens is difficult for anyone to carry alone, but how can someone support this student when their backpack is invisible? As a student, who is very involved myself with tremendous support both at school and at home, I still carry an extremely heavy invisible backpack. This is why I appreciate the efforts of our wellness teachers at Penrich High School in helping students identify stressors, coping strategies, and support networks, both inside and outside of school. Last year in 9th grade Wellness with Mrs. Heath, we talked about the impact of good decision-making on our mental health. This year, Mr. Nunavoller has expanded on the work from last year by getting to know each one of his students and the stressors in our lives. Under the current alignment of health courses, he had the time to speak with each student individually, to identify our personal stressors and establish our support networks. With the proposed changes, I am worried that future students will not be given the same benefit. With the proposed changes, who at Penrich High School will pick up the slack of helping students recognize mental health challenges? Will all teachers be trained and help students recognize stressors and identify support networks? Will these same teachers have to give up content time to address student mental health needs? I encourage you to keep student mental health and well-being at the forefront of your decision-making and include student voice in these changes moving forward. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Just as she's coming up, I want to say thank you to all the speakers so far, sharing something that I wish I had heard when we started this process. And we did it in committee, and we didn't have this participation, but hearing from everybody, especially a passion, obviously makes an impact on the Board, and thank you for doing that. But hopefully in future we can do it when we first start this process, not halfway through it.
Hello, Emily Smith, East Rock Hill. I've been a resident of Penrich for 45 years, and I'm pretty disturbed at the way our district is currently moving. We aren't standing here tonight discussing policy changes because of a dozen or so people's complaints for their religious beliefs. We're here because several of our Board Directors are so easily misled and manipulated by social media, they've come to believe things that are not at all true. It's incredibly ironic that one of the stated reasons for needing a new advocacy policy is to prevent our children from being indoctrinated, when it's obviously the adults who have already been indoctrinated by ridiculous nonsense on the internet. Recently, our school board president posted that safe space stickers need to be removed because they somehow are a gateway for teenagers to decide they want gender reassignment surgery. I don't know about everyone else, but all of the men that I've ever met are highly attached to their genitals and would not cut them off, even if they saw a rainbow sticker for eight hours a day, every day. It wouldn't happen because it is complete nonsense. To this point, your actions in changing this policy will have no positive effect on our school. You're not going to save a child from mutilating themselves because that is not something that actually happens. Do you have any research or data that will show you what this policy is going to, how it's going to impact our academics? Because safe space stickers and having an inclusive environment does have research that says it improves academics, and this may possibly further lower our rankings. All you're going to accomplish by doing this is increasing the bullying rates for LGBTQ kids that have already doubled in the last four years. You're going to get a staffing shortage because no one's going to want to work here under these restrictive policies, and a reputation for just being cruel to students. Thank you.
Miss Smith, be assured, I don't think that a sticker can change anyone from what they actually are, and I did not allege that. Next up, we have Ross McLennan.
Ross McLennan, Hilltown. It did read that about the banned book week. Banned, banned book week. I found that, I thought it was a joke at first, but it's real. Don't understand that. Okay, advocacy policy. At the last meeting, we had a surprise explanation about how a Supreme Court decision applies to teachers at Penrich displaying pride flags. I have these letters from lawyers at the Civil, at American Civil Liberties Union and the Education Law Center. They were sent to you, they clearly explained the law, and that this analysis was an error. My question is, did this Board intentionally mislead the community, or is this done out of ignorance of the law?
No, I missed, I did not realize that it would apply. I thought it did.
Okay.
There was no, there was no conspiracy, or there was all mean that it did.
Allowing the pride flags is totally-
Mr. McLennan, please suspend. You know it's not a question and answer period, even though the member did answer your question. Can you please continue with your comments and comply with the 009? Thank you.
Thank you. Allowing the pride flags is totally an error discretion and not directly governed by the Supreme Court decision, as suggested at this last meeting. I feel like, given this misleading situation, the Board should be, should table the advocacy policy and allow further discussion. I need to remind you that gender identity and sexual orientation are not just ideas to be advocated. They represent people that the school board is obligated to protect. Your first responsibility is to provide a safe place for all children to learn and to ensure that students feel safe, seen, and respected. In a minute. I found a presentation made at the last curriculum meeting, the overview of the newly adopted PA Science Standards, excellent and very informative. But I found a few of the comments made by the Board concerning. There are really no alternate realities for science and engineering to teach. There is no other side. I'm just going to ask a question. It's not somehow controlled by the left or the right unless you consider conspiracy theories, which I hope we will not be teaching in schools. Are you suggesting? That's a question. I can't say that. I want to know about creationism in our public schools. I mean, are we going to teach that? That's not a question. I'm pondering, okay? And it isn't just about facts and the sciences. Now even attack on history, it seems like everything else is under attack. Will you be asking teachers? Another question. Damn. I've got to apologize. They all have questions. But I hope you won't be teaching that there are two sides to the January 6 attacks on the Capitol.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan.
Thank you.
Your time is up.
Can I pause for one second and just ask, Colton, my computer's not working, I can't log in. Do you think you can look at it while we're doing this? Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, next for someone that has something on an agenda item is Jane Kramer.
Jane Kramer, Sellersville, mother of a high school student and member of the LGBTQ community. I'd like to start by encouraging the Board to table, really, all of the policies that are on the agenda for tonight. As the public comments continue tonight, I was just struck by the lack of thought that was put into the impacts these policies may have. You know, for so many teachers to come out in their free time to advocate for the students and for the curriculum they've worked so hard on, I hope that really gives everyone on the Board some pause, to really think about not just that policy, but all of the policies, the advocacy policy, all the ones on the agenda. What are the impacts going to be? The previous speaker had mentioned a letter from the ACLU regarding the shuttle left, probably saying that incorrectly, Supreme Court ruling. So I'd like to read a little bit of that letter, just to have it in public comment. Beginning of the letter talks about the, you know, how that law does not apply in the way that it was presented last board meeting, which I understand was not done as a conspiracy theory. From the letter, consequently, the district's reliance on shuttle left to argue either that they cannot allow the display of the pride flag, or that if they do, it will necessarily open the door to display of every other conceivable message, including homophobic and racist displays, is misplaced. The district undoubtedly still has many other displays in the school that are presumably education-related and supported by the district, e.g., American and Pennsylvania flags, support for veterans, maybe support for Ukraine or the local fire department. That's all government speech, and the district decides on that and can decide on that without opening the door to the required display of messages it doesn't want. It has become clear that district leadership does not want pride flags and messages displayed, but that is a policy choice they make, not one forced on them by law. Consequently, the decision to remove pride flags is strong evidence that the district does not support LGBTQ students and further fuels the perception that the district is behaving discriminatorily. Instead, we urge the district to create an inclusive school environment that affirms the dignity and rights of gay and transgender students. LGBTQ youth who reported having at least one-
Jane Kramer, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Please reference the letter you received.
Thank you.
Ben, Ben Bridgewater, sorry.
Hello, Ben Bridgewater, Percasie Borough. There are some who oppose the advocacy policy because they want to comfort a certain group of students, and I think this is good intention. However, I believe that it can do more harm than good. For example, I personally, I suffer from a neurological disorder called misophonia that causes me daily stress and daily suffering. There was not a single day in high school that I did not experience extreme levels of stress. It pained me so much that my grades suffered, I had to get a therapist, I lost friends over it, and some students thought I was weird because of it. Where are the posters in the classroom that say that teachers will accept me and accept people like me? I have a friend from another school who was very overweight when he was in high school. He faced countless fat jokes and was relentlessly bullied for his size. He never felt comfortable in his own body. Where are the posters in the classroom for overweight students like my friend? I have a friend who is autistic. He doesn't always have the easiest time making friends. He was bullied too. Where are the posters that say that autistic kids are just as great as kids who aren't on the spectrum? I have a friend who is a Christian. He wasn't, he isn't always accepted by his peers because of his faith. Where are the posters that say that Christians are accepted here in this classroom? I could go on and on and on with an infinite number of examples of students who are dealing with a lot, or they just weren't treated fairly by their peers, or they don't feel comfortable, because that is unfortunately the experience of being a teenager. The problem is, when you give special treatment to one group of kids, then all of the other kids who are struggling feel that they've been ignored. Is the answer then to simply place one poster for overweight kids, one poster for Christian kids, one poster for autistic kids, one poster for kids struggling with medical illnesses, and put them in every single classroom? If so, then what about the infinite amount of students who are not included in that list? If we try to accommodate them each, then, well, first of all, we will run out of room in the classroom to place all these signs and posters. But second of all, there will always be somebody excluded, somebody you don't know about. So I ask the Board, please do not leave anybody out. But also, please do not give special treatment to one group and therefore hurt the rest of the students. How do we do this? Well, I have full confidence that our Penrich teachers already have everything they need to make their classrooms acceptable. They will simply be kind, loving, and approachable to our students. That's how students feel safe in our schools. Please do not give special treatment to some students and therefore ignore the other students. Please do not give special treatment to some students and therefore ignore the other students. Thank you.
Josh Hogan, West Rock Hill. I want to first call out a wonderful thing that I've just witnessed tonight. I completely lost count of how many teachers just spoke on the topic of the graduation requirements and in all of those comments, I didn't hear one inkling of political commentary, just pure professionalism and a focus on education and sharing their views and experiences. I think that in today's environment, that deserves pretty strong commendation, folks. So thank you to all of you for that. Now, building off of that, my comment actually hits on this point. I want to speak tonight to call out that far too often, political advocacy does get in the way of education. Obviously, we, Penridge, are in the news right now, but I want to actually call your attention to a bordering school district to the south who recently implemented a simple administrative policy requiring that parents be informed about and included in the process of a student using a gender identity in school that does not match the school's official record. This seems to me like an extremely common sense policy, yet media is reporting multiple instances of staff members in this district who are promising to defy that directive. That means they're gonna enable a student's gender identity change with intentional disregard for the wishes of that student's parents. I consider this to be an existential threat to our education system. For this system to work effectively, all parents must be involved and respected. I believe that your policy proposals tonight, in particular, the policies 105, 109 and 321, as well as others, do the much needed task of returning somewhat of a focus to parents' rights. Policy 218 helps to ensure a safer learning environment, which allows everyone to keep the focus on education where it should be. As you move to pass these policies and move our district to the tip of the spear when it comes to these issues, let me thank you for another outcome of your strong leadership that has done wonders for Penridge. Last month, I wrote you a check for property taxes for the fifth time and in all five of those checks I've written to pay my taxes since moving here, the dollar amount has not gone up one single time. I went back and looked. I was curious about this this month and I went and looked at every Bucks County school district and Penridge is the only school district that can say that in the past five years I've not seen the tax raise. So, great things can happen when we have good leadership, clear vision, firm principles and strong execution. I strongly support you passing these policies as proposed tonight. Thanks.
Melissa Smith. I have you down as being yes for an agenda item?
Hello, Melissa Smith, Bedminster Township. I've heard several slogans being carelessly tossed around in the last month, slogans such as "book man" and "don't say yay", slogans meant to inflame the uninformed and divide the community. In schools populated by minor children, movies shown in class or during a bus ride to a school field trip must be age appropriate. It would be wildly inappropriate for a school teacher to show a class of elementary students a PG 13 movie or a high school class an R-rated movie, yet there are no shouts in the community of "movie banning" and there are no banned movie month displays put up in the school hallways. Likewise, books selected for school libraries should be selected based on educational value combined with age appropriateness. This should happen before the book is purchased and added to the school library. However, sometimes a book slips through the cracks for a variety of reasons. When a book currently housed in the school library or classroom appears to contain inappropriate content, the book needs to go through a challenge process where it's temporarily removed from the library for review and if it's deemed inappropriate, be removed permanently from the library. To call this process a book ban is disingenuous and inflammatory as it fails to take into account that we're dealing with minor children and what is appropriate in the school environment. I applaud the school board for updating the resources policy to ensure that the books purchased with taxpayer money for inclusion in Penridge schools are content and age appropriate. The slogan "don't say yay" is now circulating on social media in regard to the proposed advocacy activities policy. Opponents have recycled this worn out slogan in an apparent attempt to raise the temperature by insinuating that the policy targets only the LGBTQ community. However, a quick review of the policy reveals restrictions on staff advocacy as it pertains to personal views on religious and social, political and geopolitical matters, along with sexual orientation and gender identity. So clearly, no one particular group is being targeted, but rather the school employees are given clear parameters to ensure that during the school day, they maintain a neutral classroom environment. I again applaud the school board directors for updating school policies to ensure that the students are taught how to think, not what to think. Thank you.
And my last comment for the agenda items is April Folds.
April Folds, West Rock Hill Township. With respect to the advocacy policy, most of the board has expressed their commitment to a neutral classroom environment. But it's important to be aware that neutrality doesn't necessarily lead to equity. To help explain this, I'd like to offer an analogy. Consider three groups of students, each of whom is tasked with seeing what is over the top of a wall. One group is six feet tall, another is five foot five and another group is five feet tall. In our neutral classroom, each student is provided with the exact same stool. Who will be able to see over the wall? Would you offer a bigger stool to the shorter students? Or would you ask them to make do with what they were given in an effort to remain neutral? Now let's consider that in this scenario, about 80% of the students are in the tallest group, about 15% in the middle and 5% in the shortest. Would that impact your decision to provide different stools to each group of students? Based on some of the comments shared by the board and a few community members, providing different stools would be upsetting to the taller students. Why should they be the only ones without a bigger stool? Everyone got one and they should be happy with that. It's only a small number of shorter students anyway. We can't be expected to cater to them. Maybe offering a bigger stool implies that the teacher likes the shorter students better. The shorter students shouldn't talk about not being able to see over the wall. That just makes the taller students feel bad and it's not their fault they're tall. If this sounds ridiculous to you, then good. It absolutely should. But that's exactly what this policy as written will amount to. Will there be a taller student who complains that they didn't get a bigger stool? Probably. Will their parent call the school and claim that the shorter students are being favored? Probably. Should you build an entire policy around that? Absolutely not. You might think that height's a silly analogy to use here, but consider that height is something you're born with. You can't control or alter your height any more than you can control or alter your race, gender, ethnicity or sexual orientation. These don't reflect choices but are simply a part of who we are. Neutrality does not ensure equity. It just allows the current rank and status to continue. And while that might be fine with some people in the room, it's leaving other students behind. The reality is that we don't have a symbol or a sticker for everyone in the classroom and it's not because all students and staff are not important. It's because we're not all starting from the same place. Some of our students just need a slightly bigger stool to see over the wall and offering that boost doesn't imply blame, it doesn't imply favoritism and it doesn't have to come at the expense of others. Maybe instead of perpetuating the idea that some utopian state of colorblind equality will be achieved if we just pretend that we're not different, maybe we start asking our taller students to actually notice when the shorter students need a boost, offer to help them find a bigger stool. There is a solution between all and nothing. Please, please consider that before you approve this policy. Thank you.
Okay, gonna move on to the president's report.
Joan, can I make a comment before we move on?
Sure.
Couple things first. I want to publicly say happy birthday to Jordan and Joan.
Oh, mine's not today.
It was. And I am going to make a comment. I'm just gonna ask, I'd like to respond to some of the public comments as well as the false narratives in the media regarding the library policy, but I want to warn as parents are at home. I don't think we have kids in this room. Parents at home are watching. If there are children, they may want to pause the feed and ask them to leave the room. A popular but false narrative is that we are passing this policy in an anti-LGBTQ sentiment to censor students or impede on free speech. Those are all completely and 100% false. We are a public school system whose job is to provide an academic education to our students. This policy is to protect our children from age inappropriate material, nothing more. Specifically, this policy is intended to do several things. Remove all pornographic books from our schools. Ensure that we have a review policy in place going forward that will not allow books such as these to return to our libraries. Ensure full transparency to parents and the community as to what books are in our schools and are being added. And to outline a quick and effective process to help books remove if there is an inappropriate book discovered. I personally truly cannot understand why anyone would oppose a policy that protects our children from sexually explicit and pornographic filth or interferes with a parent's right to know exactly what their child could be exposed to. So I'm assuming opposition to this policy is a misunderstanding as to what type of material would be removed under this policy. Just last week, as our community sat right here and debated if a new process was really necessary and those in favor of the new policy were accused of being homophobes, book burners and many other ludicrous and false accusations, at that exact time, nine out of 13 books of concern specific to explicit sexual content were in fact in our schools, including our middle schools where children as young as 11 years old attend. In any setting other than school, it would be minimally inappropriate and in some scenarios even criminal for an adult to provide a child with such filth. While it's a sad fact that implementing policies that prohibit allowing and are providing pornographic material to children is necessary, it is in fact necessary and this is not unique to Penridge. This is happening around the country, which is why the process needs to be changed, not just the books themselves. Jordan is gonna read a short excerpt from a book that was in our libraries until just days ago. While it's grossly uncomfortable for all of us to say and hear the words our kids are exposed to, we do need to see it and hear it so everyone understands exactly the purpose of the added language. I'm certain that after hearing this and understanding the actual intention of these policy changes, this is at least one area the community will be able to agree on as I'm sure there isn't an adult in our entire district who would defend such smut or filth in the hands of a minor.
Okay, so again, just to reiterate, due to the content that I'm about to read, it's extremely explicit. So again, if on the live feed there's children present, please pause or come to a separate room as well as if there's any minors in this room. I would ask that you please excuse yourself because it is not appropriate. This is from the book Allegedly by Tiffany D. Jackson and this is one that we were made aware of that was in our libraries. "Disgusting puta, you smell like [BLEEP] through your holy panties. Some nasty fat girl who can't read getting [BLEEP] by her daddy every night and [BLEEP] because of it. Then he's not your boyfriend, Marisol says. He just using you for [BLEEP]. You're not the only [BLEEP]." "Oh, I got a man and he [BLEEP] me right every night." She moans, crying on her chair before giving Keisha a high five. There's multiple foul language in the book. That is just a short excerpt from it to be read. This is what we are talking about, that passing through policy 109 will help keep out of our schools, not the occasional minor inappropriate age material. This is no place in our schools. Thank you.
Okay. Go on to my president's report. The school board has been very busy making needed improvements to our policies throughout most of this year. The process for some of them has been much longer than typical policymaking usually takes, but it's important to get things right, which sometimes means having to spend extra time. But now that we're concluding those major projects, I want to provide a preview of where we'll be going next. First, we will continue to focus on remediating the learning losses caused by government mandated COVID school closures and other interruptions to normal learning that occurred throughout the pandemic. If you missed our September curriculum meeting, please watch the recording to hear an update from Dr. Scheid and Dr. Rubarchek about the ongoing efforts and progress in that area. The administration will also be providing regular updates on our students' overall academic progress at our meetings as we go forward. Second, in our effort to provide students with a diverse collection of resources from which to learn, we are going to review data in our library collections, about our library collections, to see that we have a good variety of viewpoints represented. The board will provide support to district personnel to review the data and update our library collections as needed. Finally, we'll be taking a look at outside organizations with which Penridge does business or has other partnership arrangements. If you've been following the school board for a while, you may recall that we perform reviews of various services and relationships at different times to ensure what we have in place is still beneficial to the school district. We value our relationships with outside organizations and businesses for the good they can do to the school community. We're very excited and grateful for the recent expansion of our pathways program and for the other connections being made with local businesses. We also recognize that having partnerships and allowing outside organizations into our schools is not to be taken lightly as we are providing access to thousands of students and their families. Since we are in this period of exciting growth, we feel it would be prudent to use this time to perform a review while also establishing guidelines to foster relationships, which will serve the Penridge community well for many years to come. And that is my report. I will pass it off to Dr. Bolton.
Thank you, Mrs. Colton. Do we have a presentation? Great, thank you, Mrs. Jenkin. First is just the celebration of a wonderful start to the school year. This first slide is just a combination of pictures that attempts to capture the excitement on the faces of our students and staff as we look back on the first month of the new school year. I want to thank our students, our teachers and their other staff for their hard work so far this year. Next, as Mrs. Cullen mentioned, I want to celebrate our Penridge Pathways Program. The Penridge Career Pathways Program has expanded this school year and took another exciting step this morning at the high school. During RAMS period, over 200 students signed up to take part in one of nine different career presentations, from biotechnology, gene editing, real estate and title insurance, entrepreneurship consulting, landscaping and homescaping design, early childhood care, occupational therapy, human resources, vaccine and infectious disease research. Students chose to use their RAMS period to hear from a local professional working in that field that may interest them. Students could then choose to receive additional information about that career cluster, including possible job shadowing and internship opportunities. There will be another session in October with our goal to reach as many students as possible with information about a variety of options for their future. A special thank you to Penridge High School Business Teacher, Mr. Chris Dyer, for his continued hard work on the Pathways Program. I would encourage anyone in this audience or in the community or if you know someone in the community that has a business or a special talent to reach out to Mr. Dyer at CDyer, that's D-Y-E-R, cdyer@penridge.org. If you or another local professional would be willing to share information with our students. Lastly, I'd like to very excitedly announce that Penridge has five seniors who have received a National Merit Award for their performance on the PSATs in the fall of 2021. That is the most during my five years in Penridge. Ava Oliphant has been named a National Merit semifinalist and Carolyn Bailey, Dylan Berexa, Pietro Darrow and Kayden Kwan were named commended students. We'll have an opportunity to congratulate them publicly during the October meeting, but I wanted to share this wonderful information as it recently became knowledge just. So that is my report, Mrs. Cullen, and it looks as if this evening we do not have a student report.
That was quick. I wasn't ready for it to be so quick.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, and no student liaison this evening. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. And I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar items A through H.
Second.
Just moved by myself and seconded by Mr. Rice. Were there any comments or questions from board members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries nine zero. And then we will do our committee reports, activities. Ms. Batizki, please.
Good evening. On September the 7th, we held an activities committee meeting. Ms. Marchese presented an international trip proposal to Portugal and Spain for 2024, from June 20th to July 2nd, 2024. So I thought it was interesting that, so she's obviously very passionate about the trip and she took the initiative to put her own agenda together for the students and the trip company that we're working with liked it so much that they added it to their standard portfolio. So as a result, I'd like to make an emotion to approve the international trip to Portugal and Spain for 13 days. and Spain for 13 days, from June 20th to July 2nd, 2024.
Seconded.
Okay, so moved by Ms. Batiski and seconded by Mr. Wors. Are there any comments or questions? Congratulations to Ms. Marchese for, it's pretty impressive, she put together the trip and they took it. I think also with her Australia and New Zealand trip, she changed things as well because of her knowledge, and EF accepted those changes too. So are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero.
The next activities committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 3rd.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Facilities. Facilities with Mr. Cormac. Oh, okay, I didn't see myself. Sorry, I skipped myself. Curriculum with me. We just have one agenda item. Going to make a motion to approve the high school proposal for a new course, which is Housing and Interior Design II.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Now, Facilities, Mr. Cormac.
Good evening. Facilities report. We have, like to make a motion to approve the GESA, which is the Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement, number seven, for South Middle School kitchen renovations, replacement of diesel fuel station, and various maintenance projects in multiple district facilities at the amount of $4,614,504.
Seconded.
Okay, so moved by Mr. Cormac and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormac.
We have approval of obsolete items. Make a motion to the obsolete items listed A through Z. Be approved.
Okay, that was moved by Mr. Cormac and seconded by Mr. Wors. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Cormac.
Our next Facilities meeting will be on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Rice, Finance.
All right, now we're into Finance. I'm seeking a motion to approve, I'm making a motion actually, to approve contracts A through L as listed below. Take a second, please.
Seconded.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moved by Mr. Rice and seconded by Mr. Cormac. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Rice.
All right, the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, Personnel, please.
We have a motion to approve tenure recommendations.
Sorry.
Motion to approve tenure recommendations for the following employees. Katrina Blocker, Chelsea Connolly, Samantha Fell, Amy Jankovic, Brooke Labs, Nicole Miller, Ally Regal, Kelly Shute, Sarah Scott, Aleish Simonson, Heidi Stevenson, Mario Ventreska, Danielle Warner, Ashley Weida, Jessica Ashlock, and Hannah Cook.
Seconded, motion.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Russell and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions other than congratulations? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Russell.
The next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 3rd.
Thank you. Mrs. Banas Clemens, Policy, please.
Thank you. Okay, Policies for First Read. I will make a, first of all, does anyone need any of these three policies voted on separately?
For the first reading?
Yes.
So.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the first reading on Policies A through C.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Banas Clemens and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions? Go ahead, or Dr. Bolton.
I do just want to speak to Policy 109. This is similar to the information that we shared at the Policy Committee meeting. If we could call it Policy 109, please. The concern pertains to, the format of Policy 109, if you haven't looked at it, separates in terms of high school, middle school, and elementary school. And there are specific delineated sexual content pieces. That is the main, largest change in 109 in terms of that focus on sexual content and age appropriateness for the resources we put in front of our students. At the end of each of those sections, if you go to the middle school one, please scroll down. Nope, keep going. All right, oop, no. I need the other version of 109 open, sorry. You know. That was it, go back up.
One more?
Yep, one more, right there. So you see number three, number three, and then, so there's a delineation of specific types of sexual content. And as we've spoken with the librarians, that is the piece that as they look at, that tends to make sense for them, and for the most part, those things obviously are not considered for our libraries. Where the concern falls is the area underneath that, where there then are some wording languages that are not as clear, and it talks about both in the middle school and the elementary, it talks about permitted but de-prioritized sexual content, saying that there may be some other sexual content that is in books. We want to choose to not prioritize those, but there might be situations where we look at it and say, yes, that is the best resource. We just want to make sure that we've made that decision consciously and that there's some decision process there. That language, as it reads in middle school and elementary, talks about materials that do not contain other sexualized content, such as non-explicit or implied written descriptions of sexual acts or implied depictions of nudity. It's identical in elementary. High school's a little different. The concern really has to do with putting our librarians in a situation for them to be able to judge that. When you look at library review sites, it is very easy for librarians to get a sense for what are the major content and themes of a book. It is impossible, right, it's not even more difficult, it is impossible to be able to judge things that might be implied or not explicit. The only way to be able to do that would be to read the entire text, which I think is laborious for our librarians to be asked to consider reading every text that's there, because you may not know if something's implied from that standpoint. If a title were, right, if they did were to know that and the title were deemed to be appropriate, it talks about gaining the consent from parents, and so the time and energy that it would take for, if you think about at the high school, we have 2,400 students, and so let's say that's 1,800 families, to be able to track down the consent for them and the number of families that would not reply, and then the manpower to be able to track that down. The process, the policy does make it very clear, and the librarians are very clear that they are looking at age-appropriate materials, and they do understand sexual content, and making sure that anything that is of a concern or even a potential concern then goes through multiple layers. There is their building principal, there is then district office, both the assistant superintendent or supervisor, as well as superintendent, as well as a review process for parents or any community member who has a concern at a title that we may not have been aware of or share that same concern. And so I'm just continuing to be concerned about that language and the amount of work it would put on our librarians and take away from some of their key moments in the library. So I again would ask the board to consider possible adjustments to that language in 109.
I'd just like to make a comment. I would, if someone would have asked me several weeks ago, would it make more sense to just say not to include content, sexualized content that's not age appropriate, I would have thought that would have been sufficient in a policy. After the material, the numerous materials that I have seen that were in our libraries, it's clear to me that certain individuals don't know what age appropriate means. And for that reason, I agreed to be more specific in laying out what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. As a parent, the fact that these materials were in my kid's library, my kid could have signed them out, makes me livid. And I look back to when I was in fourth grade, my parents had to sign a form for me to participate in the puberty class. Every single parent had to sign that form. People didn't consider that laborious then. And now they can read a rated X material that they sign out at the library without their parent's knowledge, all the way down to the sixth grade level. I'm sorry, that's completely inappropriate, and if that's what we've, if that's the level we've sunk into, then I don't have an issue requiring that we get parent permission for them to be able to read those kinds of books. And I feel bad because there are a lot of librarians in this district, most, probably almost all librarians in this district, who can decipher between appropriate and inappropriate, but clearly not all of them. And the fact that these materials that turned up were justified instead of an immediate, oh wow, I can't believe that was in there, we need to take care of that, that to me, you know, was a red flag. As far as the advocacy policy, since we're approving it all at once, you know, I just wanted to share kind of a perspective, I think about the stool analogy, right? And, you know, we're not taking away, any stools, we're not taking away, but different, not every kid, you know, there are different groups of kids who are going to need extra supports, and no one is suggesting taking any of their supports away from any kid. You know, I think it's important that, and everyone up here thinks that it's important to be supporting every single kid and, you know, making them feel included. I've gotten very different opinions on whether or not that means, you know, to put a spotlight on it versus not put a spotlight on it. You know, I've actually gotten a lot of opinions, you know, from individuals in those groups who say they don't want a spotlight on it, they just want to be included like everybody else, they don't want, you know, that kind of, you know, attention. But at the same time, you know, I do think the idea of having something, you know, it also bothered me, the idea that if you go into a classroom that doesn't have a sticker, then somehow that classroom is unsafe. Every one of our classrooms are safe, every teacher in our buildings cares about every single kid and is a safe person to talk to and wants to support every single kid. And I think, you know, maybe, you know, I brought the suggestion of a poster to the last meeting that really just highlights that and says that every kid is valued and included and cared about for who they are. And that, you know, that makes sure that no one feels left out and everyone knows that every teacher is a safe person to talk to. So, you know, I think, I think there are directions to go. Again, I just want to, I know that different people, you know, everybody's putting different legal hats on and, you know, everybody's a lawyer today, but the reality is, we're not, we are not the moral authority, and we can't say, you can have this in your classroom that expresses your opinion, but you can't have that in your classroom that expresses a different opinion. And if you think about, you know, every single person has a hot button issue that they wouldn't want that opinion expressed, and we talked about flags, every one of you can think of a flag that you would, that you would be appalled if it was in your kid's classroom. If we allow one flag, we have to allow all flags. And think about a flag that you wouldn't want in your kid's classroom. That's just the reality. When you, when you push these things into a policy, you have to take all of that into account, and you can't, you can't pick and choose. We're not the moral authority, we don't have the right to say, well, these are good and these aren't. And I know that people think that everything's common sense and we should be able to delineate, but we just don't have the right to do that, we don't have the ability to do that. And that's been established in, you know, in law. So that's all I wanted to say.
I just, I wanted to go back to 109. You know, I just, so in the, and forgive me, I don't know if I'm looking at the same one you're looking at, but I think both of them have the paragraph that says parental consent must be obtained for elementary school students, well, middle school, elementary school, whatever, before assigning any textbook or supplementary resource materials. So I guess in that way, it wouldn't be just getting permission for every book that might be in the library. To me, that says it's, you know, if you're assigning it as a teacher, then maybe you are expected to know everything that's in that book. And in defense of the librarians, once again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but this problem is bigger. It's, someone already said it's bigger than Penbridge. It's a bigger problem than just our school district, and it's really coming from the inaccurate descriptions of books that people are being asked to review, and it doesn't, it's not explicit, review sites don't give you all of the information. So there is a balance there, and we are mindful of that. One of the public commenters said that, you know, sometimes mistakes will happen and you just deal with them. But this policy is aimed to really make sure that those mistakes are very rare and happening. So I don't know, Dr. Bolton, if you had a suggestion or if you just wanted to go to the vote.
The only concern from a librarian's standpoint is if that, because so much of this deals with library books and library resources, obviously it does involve other resources, but primarily the library. And so when it says assigning any textbook or supplementary resources, there was a level of concern that that means every book in the library, right, if there's anything that is of this de-prioritized sexual content that's in there, that there would have to be some sort of parent approval, sort of a student checked it out. Now, if you're saying that that word assigning talks about actually telling a student they have to interact with, because that's what assigning is, as opposed to it's an option there, I think the librarians would welcome that in terms of that expectation, but I was not positive that that's what that language meant. But if that is what the intent is of that language, then... Yep. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing with respect to the librarians, and they have a tough job. They may have made some mistakes, but I think they were not putting those books in there on purpose. They may have read a bad review and maybe not read every single paragraph of the book. So they made some mistakes, but I think overall I completely support them, and I think you're doing a great job, so just wanted to add that.
I do want to point out, there was a review of one of these books in question. The review of the book said nothing about the sexual content in the book. I think it spoke to, what was it, violence or something. It talked about violence, but made no mention of the sexual content. And then when you read the sexual content, it's enough, you know, it was really explicit. So that's what we're saying when we're talking about these review websites and things. So this isn't meant, in my mind, it's not meant to come down heavy on anyone, it's really just meant to protect our kids in the way that we're able to, and then work on things from maybe another angle, but we just want to keep this inappropriate content out of the students' hands. Okay.
Right. I would just like to add to that too, even from reading the excerpt, I don't believe that one of our librarians read that and said, put it on the shelf. It's just that this policy, then, when you come across like that, if it isn't there, if the review, if the reviews are misleading, then at least you have policy to immediately be able to remove it instead of having to go through a more lengthy process and possibly keep it on the shelves. So I do want to make that clear too, that this is not to come down on the librarians, it's the bigger picture, and if coming across anything like this, there's nothing in place to be able to deal with that situation.
Okay, I think we can call the question now. I'm sorry, John.
We're looking at all these together, so all three together, so we're speaking to all three of these then?
Correct, for the first read.
Yeah, the one thing that I was wondering about, we were getting some feedback that the term advocacy was confusing to some people, the way that we intended it, and I'm just wondering, and Mike, maybe you can speak to this, whether we should define advocacy, and I offer a definition for it, but it would be to use power, position, or authority to advise or persuade, and if we could include that in Policy 321. Any thoughts on that?
Ms. Banas Clemens, will you accept that friendly amendment?
Can other board members comment first, whether or not they want me to accept that amendment?
Yeah, that's a, I mean, if we do that, then we should start over. I mean, you can't just add something at the last minute and have us have an honest opinion on it.
Sure, I mean, that's why this is a first read, right?
Yes.
Mr. Russell, but you see, the next motion is to suspend the rules and adopt it on first read, which is permitted under Policy 03. That's what I think Mr. Wors is talking about.
I'll accept the amendment, and then if it gets voted down, then I'll just make a new motion.
All right, so Ms. Banas Clemens has accepted the definition read out by Mr. Russell, which is a friendly amendment. Will the second or accept that friendly amendment? Mr. Rice, will you accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'll accept it.
Right, so that's been amended as ruled by, as negated by Mr. Russell, and the motion stands as amended.
So it's moved by Mrs. Banas Clemens and seconded by Mr. Rice. All right, we called the question, so we'll just take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I got that as an eight one, motion carries. Ms. Banas Clemens?
Final approval of... Final approval of PSD policies. According to policy 003, a motion to suspend the procedure of a second read and approve policies 109, 218, and 321 based on their first read. I'll make that motion.
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Bannister-Clements, and I think I heard Mrs. Chaken seconded.
Yeah, I just want to add a comment there. Yesterday, I learned that we were voting on policy 321 tonight. According to my discussions with a bunch of different people, we would have a first read, a second read, and then a vote on all policies. That vote was scheduled for the October school board meeting. Now, I'm told that because of policy 003, which I did not read, we can skip all readings and vote on it tonight. If the purpose of the first read and the second read is to give the public time to comment, then why is it being rushed to be passed? It seems like a great tool to stifle debate and get something ran through. So, tonight, we are rushing into a policy that will have a chilling effect on 600-plus or teachers, 600 percent, all because the board is upset with a few of them. The main purpose of the board at the start of this process was to remove the pride flags in the school. We felt it was divisive. We all agree that the pride flag has to come down in the school. It's also a symbol that is political in nature. It's an agenda from the left and from the right to have it removed. We all agree on that, the flags are going to come down, okay? But it didn't start out that way. The pride flag was originally a symbol of acceptance and hope. It's has drastically changed in the last few years. It is now a political symbol. However, under the existing policy 321, it forbids political activity, which the pride flag now easily fits under. A number of school districts have already banned pride flags because they were political. There's, they've gone down that road. So, why don't we just follow their lead? Why are we already making this so much more complicated? Now, every one of our 600 teachers will ask themselves whether or not to advocate for their students. This has been a part of their job forever. According to the policy, we're going to approve, the teacher may not engage in advocacy activities during work hours or on our property. That's the way it is in the policy, you can read it. Advocacy is defined as a public support or recommendation of a particular cause or policy. A particular cause, that can mean anything. That is so broad a definition, that will make a lot of teachers think twice before in giving any kind of advice or help to the children. Our kids will suffer because teachers will be hesitant to help because their job now depends on whether someone in the district would consider their help advocacy. Where will they draw the line? Teachers see kids every day. They develop nice relationships with them, and that leads to a level of trust. Now, teachers will be forced to send the kids they care about to a guidance counselor who may work with hundreds of kids and doesn't really know the student. It will further harm the fragile state of our kids' mental health, which so many people argue about. And as a reminder, policies will not stop activists. They will always find a loophole. So, even if you're attacking a few people who have done this, you're going to affect a lot of others. So, tonight, we are voting prematurely on approving an overreaching policy that will further handicap our teachers and bring us significant legal bills, as many groups have already targeted advocacy as an issue, all because a few want to get rid of the pride flags. So, in investigating this as a political issue, I asked the administration, is this something that we would agree would be a political, if we agreed as a board that this was a political symbol and that we would end up removing it? And if I asked if Dr. Bolton could comment on that?
Mr. Wors, any, our current policy 321 does say that any employee engaging in political activities is prohibited, so anything defined as a political activity would be prohibited? And so if a pride flag is defined as a political activity, yes, it would be prohibited under the current policy 321?
By the board.
Correct.
Just want to point out too, that it specifically mentions, you spoke of advocacy in teachers advocating for students, which is important in certain aspects. The part in the policy that speaks more specifically to what shouldn't happen is areas of advocacy regarding staff's own personal beliefs and the coercion of that to students. That's where this is more coming into play, not just stopping advocacy altogether.
That's a huge gray area. I mean, everybody has their own personal beliefs. They don't necessarily consider advocacy. They're teaching, and now you're going to force the teacher to think about that. And most of these teachers are, I've heard so many amazing teachers tonight, I have no, I don't want to burden them with that extra responsibility. We can get rid of the flags, that's what we started out to do. And I'm not supportive of that, but I agree with the boards, there's definitely enough people who would like to do that, so we're going to do that. But how we implement it makes a big difference to the public and to our students. So, I'm just asking for this to be considered.
Ron, I just want to say, for myself, you've said a lot of things about how the board feels and don't include me in a lot of them.
Okay.
Because you've said several incorrect things about what our intention is, and as far as a burden on the teacher, it's the same thing I said at the last meeting. I think you're underestimating the teachers, saying, "Know what we mean, we're not saying they can't help students. We're saying that these five specific things, it is not the job of the teacher to counsel a student on that." And I think you're underestimating their ability to differentiate.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of fast-tracking it, for lack of a better term. I think we laid out the plan, even though I think it's frustrating at times to go through the plan, we need to use that process that's been established. I don't want to, you know, somehow leapfrog over the first read and go immediately to implementation. And I do think that if we can define advocacy more tightly, and maybe this is a start, maybe that's fine, what I suggested, I think it's better, because some people evidently aren't understanding advocacy the way that we're intending it to be, so I think we need to be more clear in that regard. But I'm not, with regard to this particular vote, I'm not in favor of putting it, implementing it with just one read.
Impressive. For clarity and for the audience's ability to follow along, policy 003 of the school board allows the board by majority vote, if it chooses to, to dispense with any of the policies of the board temporarily. And the motion here, based on policy 003, allows the board, if it chooses by majority vote, to dispense with the second read, if it chooses to do so, whether that's wise, whether that's the most effective way of doing it, is something for the judgment of the board generally, but as a procedural matter, it's a rule of longstanding in this district. Nothing in the school code requires two reads of policy. Again, it may be a best practice, but that is, again, determined by the will of the school board, a majority of the school board. So, just a little bit of clarity on where we're at procedurally. Sorry to be goryly.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry, you can, I was going to look something up in the policy, just quickly, go ahead. Who is it?
Do you know, because the fast-tracking, we've been on some of these policies now for months and months and months, and everybody's saying, "Let's move on, focus on academics." So, I think that was the thought behind us. Do we know how many times we've discussed this? John?
Yeah, I was waiting for everybody to kind of conclude their comments. But I did want to point out, first and foremost, this applies to all symbols. I think we're getting drawn into this idea that it's targeted at one thing. It absolutely is not targeted at one thing. It's targeted at all advocacy that influencing because a teacher is in a power position over students who are impressionable. So, it applies to everything. Teachers, of course, will still be able to advocate as it pertains to a student's education, and we expect that 100 percent. And finally, these policies, now normally we discuss policies and it will go first read, which is confusing, it's the first time we talk about the policy. That happens at a policy committee meeting. Then you go to the board meeting and you vote on that first read. That doesn't mean that it's a policy. It goes back another time and gets a second read at a policy committee meeting. And then after that second read, it goes to the school board meeting and you vote on it, and that's when it becomes a policy that's implemented in the school district. So, you talk about it basically one time, because on the second read, you're not allowed to make material changes to the policy or else you'll get kicked back to first read. And I can already see people falling asleep, so let me go on. This policy, 109, has been discussed at one, two, three, four, five separate policy committee meetings, I'm sorry, four policy committee meetings and one board meeting tonight. And then the advocacy policy, 321, has been discussed at three policy meetings and tonight's board meeting. So, each one of these policies, 109 and 321, has been discussed twice as much as we normally talk about policies. And so that's where this request is coming from, is to just say, you know, we've talked around and around and around, talked it to death, everybody has been heard, and the thought is that we need to move on. So, that's why the suggestion was made that we make this a final approval. So, I have two questions. The first one is, if the amendment that provides a definition, does that constitute a material change, Mr. Miller?
If the majority of the board waives the rules, they can approve it.
Okay. And then I just, gosh, I just lost the second thing that I was going to add, but at any rate, they have been discussed at length, they've been discussed much more. And it's not normally what happens because we don't, our policies generally don't generate this much, you know, they're not as impactful, I guess I would say. Normally, we have templates that come from PSBA and they're kind of cut and dry. These were a little bit more nuanced. Other school districts don't do the policies the same way that we do them. They don't have as much time in between their first reads and second reads. It's different ways of doing things, so it's not as if it's unheard of to do it in this way either. Oh, and that was the other thing I wanted to point out, I can't recall a time, and I guess Dave, Megan, and I, and maybe Bob, I can't recall a time that we suspended policy off the top of my head.
I kind of thought there might have been once.
Maybe, well, maybe.
It would have been very...
So, that's what I thought, if there was any times, it maybe was one time. So, it's a rare occurrence and not something that should just be used, you know, really nearly.
I think ideally, it's designed, if everybody agrees on policy and there's not controversy that this was a good thing, 003 is a good thing for that. But there's a lot of controversy on this, there's a lot of people here who are interested in, and I think rushing it through would be a mistake and not fair to the community.
Okay, so I think the motion and second that we have on the floor...
We do this separately.
The avoid, or roll call vote?
Yeah, want to separate each one of these.
Oh, you want to take each? Okay, then...
My suggestion is to do roll call vote on 109, then 218, then 321, in order.
On the motion that's on the floor to suspend the procedure?
Correct.
And approve the policy, sorry. That is what the motion says. A motion to suspend the procedure of a second read and approve policies 109, 218, 321, but we're going to take each one separately. So, we'll start with 109. Mrs. Channell?
Okay, Mrs. Bannister-Clements?
Yes.
Ms. Patitski?
Yes.
Mrs. Blongren?
Yes.
Mr. Chaken?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Wors?
No.
Okay, now please, I think that was seven-two, motion carries. Then the next policy, 218, student discipline, please, Mrs. Channell.
Mrs. Bannister-Clements?
Yes.
Ms. Patitski?
Yes.
Mrs. Blongren?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaken?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Wors?
Yes.
Okay, so that was eight-one, motion carries, and finally, policy 321, Mrs. Channell.
Mrs. Bannister-Clements?
Yes.
Ms. Patitski?
Yes.
Mrs. Blongren?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaken?
Yes.
Mr. Cormac?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Mr. Wors?
No.
Okay, so I got that as seven-two, motion carries. Mrs. Bannister-Clements?
Thank you. Next is the final approval of PSD policies. Are there any policies up for final read that board members would like voted on separately?
Yes, I would like 217, separate from the list, please.
Okay, anybody else?
All right, so we'll need a motion for A through H and then J, I believe.
Correct. So, I'll make a motion for, to approve policies A through H and J?
A second.
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Bannister-Clements and seconded by Mr. Rice. Are there any comments or questions on those policies? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, nine-zero. Mrs. Bannister-Clements?
I'll make a motion to approve policy 217.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, so it was...
Seconded by Mrs. Channell.
It was moved by Mrs. Bannister-Clements and seconded by Mrs. Chaken, this is 217, graduation requirements. Ms. Patitski?
So, if it does not pass, does it go back to second read or first read? How does that work?
Go ahead, Dave.
It would depend on if there are any changes to it or not. If there are no substantial changes to the current policy, it could come back as second read at any time, because it has been approved as a first read, there's nothing magical about being back-to-back months. If there was a substantial change made to policy 217, then it would need to go back to first read and would require the normal two readings that we do on a last policy. And George, you're free to go.
So, if we were going to talk with the teachers some more in curriculum meeting, that would be a first read?
No, it would remain a second read until you make changes to it. If you made changes to it, then as Dr. Bolton indicated, it would go back to first read unless the board decided to suspend the policy.
So, I just wanted to, there was a comment made about that this was supposed to go to committee and then didn't and was rushed through. That's not true at all. This policy has been around and around and around for months, and it wasn't until it was approved that there was a suggestion to not send it to a second read and then, you know, send it back to a different committee. So, that was not something that was any kind of original plan, that was something that was done after it had passed first read. There were some suggestions from the, first of all, the administrative recommendation was to bring the health and phys ed requirements down to one and a half. The, that's something that has been around and around for months. The attached breakdown of that is a, the suggestion from the administration was to have one full credit of health requirements and a half credit of phys ed requirements. It sounds like our health and phys ed teachers, in the last meeting, we had talked about that being one credit of the phys ed piece and a half credit of the health piece. Our health and phys ed teachers are advocating to leave it at the one credit of health and half credit of phys ed. The way that this is written, and even the way that the chart is written, would not prevent the board from doing that. If this goes to curriculum and the board has the health and phys ed teachers in to do that, they can have one full credit still of health and a half credit still of phys ed, it doesn't prevent it from doing that. It's actually written that way in the policy. So, you could flip-flop that at the curriculum committee meeting if you wanted to. So, I just wanted to make that clear. And then as far as the social studies piece, it drops it to three credits, the curriculum committee can decide what that breakdown looks like. I also don't think it's fair to necessarily say, you know, on the social studies piece that somehow kids are losing choices, they're gaining choices, because kids can still take those AP, those AP courses, but this opens the door to them taking additional courses that they may not have had the opportunity to take. I mean, we keep talking about pathways, and I guarantee you, if we bring in science teachers, science teachers are going to say that we need an extra credit of science. English teachers are going to say we need more credits. Everybody's passionate about their content areas, which is great, but not every kid is going to benefit from more of the same exact content areas, and we're really tying kids' hands behind their backs if we're saying, "Look, every single one of you needs these exact credits," and not giving, you know, that flexibility to kids who need different credits. And we talked a lot about, you know, kids who are in band or kids who are in tech, who have very limited credits as it is to choose from to be able to build that. I mean, we have kids at the tech school who want to open their own businesses, they can't even take a business course because they don't have any credits to do it.
Can we get some other people to comment too? Sorry, it's a... I really respect... I really respect the teachers who came here tonight and I think we'd be foolish to passes with all their concerns showed tonight. And I think we should take another step back and look at it. You know, we determined that we spent a lot of time on this, but it's too important. And everybody's got their opinion, but I like to rely on the administration and the teachers to have more input on this.
I will go back to the beginning, the very, very beginning of this discussion whenever we first started talking about the graduation requirements, which yes, was months and months ago. But I still don't think that reducing the social studies requirement from four to three is a good idea, nor do I think it's a good idea to reduce the health and squish it all into one course. Mr. Cousin's point, I thought was great about the, you know, readiness of a student to take AP US history in ninth grade. It's just, it's not going to be there. It's a difficult course. And I think when we have been celebrating and rightly so, celebrating our success with AP classes that our students have had, taken the AP tests or AP exams and getting those great scores, I don't think that it makes any sense to reduce it. And also, if we're going to talk about reducing from four to three or cutting down 25% of the time, but then asking to add some content that we'd like required. So I'm not in favor of passing it. I don't know if anybody wants to table it until October, as Dr. Bolton had suggested, to allow social studies teachers to come and speak and health and PE teachers to come and speak. But I'm just not in favor of passing this tonight in any event.
A member can make a motion to table. Table requires no second.
I would like to call the question.
Okay.
I think to make a motion to table it.
The motion to table is permitted. Does not need a second. There is no debate on the motion to table under Robert's rules. If you motion tabled, then the matter is tabled. If you motion, if you vote not, I'm sorry, I can't speak English. If you vote not to table, then the matter will be voted on consistent with the motion already made. So the motion to table takes precedence. There's been a motion, you need to vote on it.
Okay. Okay, so the motion on the table is to table. Policy 217, second read for graduation requirements.
Ms. Cullen, I, although Mrs. Chandler is going to stab me with a pen and I'm within arm's reach, I recommend that we do this by voice vote so it's clear on the record. Not voice vote, but.
A roll call vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chandler.
Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
No.
Ms. Batizki?
Yes.
Mrs. Blongrin?
Yes, and can I speak one bit or no?
No, you can't.
Okay, then.
You're voting to table.
Okay, yes to table.
Ms. Chaken?
No.
Mr. Cormac?
No.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes to table.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Wirth?
Yes.
The matter, 217 is tabled by a vote of six to three. Can be brought off the table by a motion at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Vanis Clemmons?
The next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 11.
And you have IU.
Thank you. The IU met on September 20th. And I just had a few highlights for you. One of the, one of the greatest presentations was on assistive technology. And it was really, you know, it was really interesting to hear of all the different technologies. You wouldn't even think of all the different technologies that are available to assist kids and matching those assistant technologies to accommodate kids with different needs. They were sharing different ideas too about, you know, people even in public, even at a park, that can take a picture of a sign and they can read that, it can read that picture back to them in a different language so that if they wouldn't have recognized what that sign said. You know, technology that can read the pledge for a student, that can read to you, speak for you. You know, it can blow things up, change things if people are colorblind, using a different pencil grip, assistive listening equipment for kids who are hearing repaired. You know, they also are able to bring in different funding sources to help cover those different technologies. You know, and sometimes it's about matching the device with the right software. They even talked to, they even, I was surprised by how many even different switches they have. You know, they have different switches that are at different angles depending on what the kid's physical impairments are, different sizes, using your hand, using your finger, using your foot. It can be proximity, if you can't even move to a certain extent. You know, it's just really interesting to see how much it's really accommodating different kids. Voice output for graphic calculators. You know, there was also this really amazing testimonial by a student and parent from the Bucks County IU. It showed a video of this kid being fully included and how her device had helped her be able to communicate because she wasn't able to communicate without this device. And the parents had shared that they specifically moved to this county for the Bucks County Intermediate Unit because they would be able to provide that, those supports and that that student is successful because of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. Another thing that I wanted to share with you, there's going to be a Walk for Hearing on Sunday, October 16th. Forty percent of the profits will go to the IU. There's also for 18 to 21-year-olds, there's a transition program called Project Search International. And they partnered with our county to have internships for people with disabilities. And some of those people are then being hired and getting a full-time job out of that position. There's also going to be a secondary transition options and resource fair on November 3rd for kids that are transitioning into that age group to see what programs are available. I speak a lot about our WOW program. That's one of those programs for, you know, for people when they get to that age group. The other thing, there were a lot of things that were shared. I don't often bring a lot of what comes through the legislative report that we get there, but there were several things that I thought were really interesting to share back that are, you know, potential bills out there and also some suggestions. One of the things was some suggestions that were brought from the US Secretary of Ed on to deal with school staffing shortages. And some of those suggestions were really interesting. I know that there are other states that currently do some of these things and I've seen some success with them. One is having a high-quality paid registered apprenticeship program for teaching, which would allow basically an earn-and-learn model to help people be able to move into that, you know, that field. Also increasing collaboration across workforce and education systems, including strengthening career pathways, partnerships, you know, providing opportunities for school-based staff to become teachers. And long-term collaboration through inclusion in state plans required by ESEA, IDEA, and Perkins. So, you know, some different ideas on how to do that. And the last one was ensuring, was just about, had to do with providing a stipulation on a certain wage. Those things, you know, are different suggestions coming forth. And then there were other highlights. I'll try to be brief. You know, there is going to be a universal free breakfast program that goes into effect on October 1st. So that's something for everybody to be aware of as well. And I think that's been announced through district communications. And there's, you know, some different policies. It's just, you know, I won't get into a lot of it because some of it we've talked about, but there's some different things that our policies are addressing that actually are coming through in different bills. One other one that I thought was interesting to mention too, there's an in-person instruction and tuition grant program, House Bill 1254, that would essentially, if there was a situation again where a school district was not providing full-time in-person instruction and, you know, not allowing that, that it would actually require them to establish a tuition grant program. So if a school district was not, did not have a full-time in-person option, they would actually have to pay for students to attend any other school, which would even be, even if they went to a Christian school or whatever, the school district would have to pay for it. So that's something that's in a bill, you know, that's being considered as well. So, you know, different bills that are going through that might be worth, you know, looking into. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Upper Bucks Tech with Mr. Cormac, please.
Good evening again. I've got some great news for you. 2022 Summer Co-op Program. We had 38 students exclusively for summer co-op jobs. In 2022, the current co-op status is 43 jobs, five with Palisades, 18 with Penrich, 20 with Quakertown. We are actually representing 14 technical programs that they have within the tech school. I just want to make folks aware that the employers, and we're looking, by the way, we're looking at 38 employers in Upper Bucks that are working with the tech schools. Each one of the employers needs to have a detailed job description, company policies, handbook, worker comp, and site inspection. Students, parents will meet with the executive director and the employer to discuss responsibilities in a program and sign documentation. I just tell you that because I really believe that we're looking at making sure that all the students that are involved in this co-op program are, have the proper environment to excel in. So I think we just need to make the general audience aware of that. At the end of 2021, 22, 80 students on co-op, mixture of sophomore, juniors, and seniors. Forty-seven of the seniors were offered a full-time employment upon graduation. Those are impressive numbers. And I'm really glad to report that to you. That is my report. Our next meeting with the tech schools, October 20th, 2022.
Great, that's great news. And next, we have the Penrich Area Coordinating Committee. Either Mrs. Chaken or Mrs. Blongrin.
All right, so met on Thursday, September 22nd. And hearing from Bedminster, they're looking to have more of a police presence at the tech school. From Bedminster Police, since they're at close proximity to the tech school. Silverdale recently had their community day this past Sunday, and it was coordinated by one of our very own, Dave Thomas. So I hope it went well. I don't, I'm sure, awesome. And West Rock Hill, they're discussing Holiday House and its use, and they're still brainstorming some ideas. And one thing that is still concerning is the community center is still only able to be open for three days a week still. And there's still a need of funds that they lost since COVID. So if you are having an upcoming event or you know anybody that needs a place to hold an event, think of having it at the community center. And then the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 27th.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Bolton, Penrich Community Educational Foundation.
PCEF met on September 10th. Two main items. One, exciting, again in the fall, every fall they do classroom grants where our teachers are allowed to come up with innovative ideas and then PCEF selects those. Those selections will be made this upcoming Saturday on October 1st, and they will be before the board for approval and celebration at our October meeting. And second, every fall, there's a need for volunteers in PCEF. So if there's anyone who'd be interested in working with the Education Foundation, their most timely need is for a treasurer in terms of from an officer position, but they also are looking for people who would just like to help with one event. So if you'd like, hey, I'd like to be involved and I'm willing to do one thing, please just reach out to me and I'll get you in touch with the leadership because they'd be glad to say welcome to the group. That's the report.
All right, thank you. That brings us to old business. Do we have any old business? Ooh, new business? I don't have any. All right, so we're back to public comment. And I just want to double check. I think we have only a few people who are signed up for public comment for this section. And the first is Ross McLennan.
Ross McLennan, Hilltown. First, I want to apologize to the LGBTQ students and community. You are in our hearts. This board does not represent you. So when and how did the bright, pride flag become political? I'm trying to figure that one out. That's rhetorical, by the way. That's not a question for the board. So now I get the banning of banned book week. You are banning books. Okay, got it. All right. Please quit trying to cover up the obvious bullying and unabated issues concerning black and brown and LGBTQ students. Students have stood before you and told you there are problems in the high school. Parents have stood here telling you there's problems in the high school. So unless you are a black or brown person or you are queer or disadvantaged, you have absolutely no right to suggest that there are no problems in this school. You need to realize you are not only wrong, but you look like a fool standing there saying, please stop it. Please give us some real leadership in dealing with this bullying. Thanks for reading that example of what you fear and have banned. I don't agree. What you feel is smut and pornography. What you find explicit, many find as good fiction that their teens need to read to understand the reality of the world. Kids are exposed to far more sexual content on the internet. You're not the morality of police. Thank you very much.
Okay, Adam Benchik, East Rock Hill.
Adam Benchik, East Rock Hill. So Ross stole my thunder a little bit. But because words have meaning, and if you're going to use a word, you should know what it means. Pornography is defined as the printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activity intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. I don't think there's anybody here, I don't think there's anybody that could interpret what Mrs. Blongrin read earlier as erotic. It's not erotic. It's a book. It is not erotic. It is not meant to delite. That's not what it's for. That's why I don't trust this board to make these decisions. I trust librarians to make the decisions. And yes, maybe it shouldn't be, well, it definitely shouldn't be in middle school libraries. There are age restrictions. But you should not be, you shouldn't, you're not the ones who can make these because you obviously have political, you're politicians. You obviously have political, whatever. There's politics behind what you guys do. And, I mean, that's fine. That's what you are. But we shouldn't take that away from the librarians. We shouldn't, these books make a difference in kids' lives. They, like, there are books that change lives. And yes, sometimes they may have a passage that is explicit. But that's what, that's how kids talk. I don't know if you've, maybe not your kids probably find that hard to believe. But kids talk like that. And that's what that book is about. That's why, read the reviews for the book. There are, like, that book has touched many people. And yes, there are, there are ways now, there are procedures in place to keep your kids from checking the books out of the library. You can do that. You have every right to do that. That's parental rights. You have the right to do that. But you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be taking away the librarian's choice. And what's funny is that you want to take away the books from the library here, but you also want to take away the books from the library in Penrich. I mean, or in Bucks County. The books get hidden all the time by, I'm sure, people in this room. And so you, what you want to do is ban books. There's no other way to put it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to.
Next.
Sorry.
I mean, I guess we can go on to the next.
Is it? I was just going to mention that. That's just not the only book. So I just want to make that clear with the definition that you're using if you don't think that that excerpt goes with that definition.
Okay. All right. So the next person signed up is Jane Kramer again. Did she leave? Let's see her. Okay, all right. And finally, we have Arthur Ketterer. State your name and municipality. State your name and municipality.
Arthur Ketterer, West Rock Hill. Hello. Nice to meet you all. First time here. I'm Manu. So appreciate what you guys do. My, uh, issue is a few things. Uh, one is the security of the discipline. The, uh, outcome of a student being searched. I, uh, talked to many students and parents and I'm finding out that, uh, you approve. If a student refuses to be searched, an automatic ten days, as mentioned. Ten days. I think that's educational interfering, social interfering, and parental, you're interfering with parents' life by doing that. Ten days, I think is a little harsh. I think you should regroup, think about that and maybe modify that. I'm a twelve-year veteran, not looking for a daddy boy. I agree in discipline. That's my, that's why I'm telling you that. Discipline is needed in all we do in this world. But I think too much discipline can hurt somebody, especially students nowadays. The other issue is two girls were in a stall yesterday talking. One girl, very hard issues going on in her life right now. My daughter was talking to her. She was crying to her.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ketterer?
Yes.
The, the rules of the board require that any kind of individualized student issue
Oh, okay.
has to be talked about with the administration. So general comments are fine. We made them, but individual issues are, it's not something we can top up.
Okay.
No, no, sir.
Okay.
First time speaker, understood.
Students who are speaking in a stall among themselves and, uh, I guess a new rule, checking if I'm wrong, is more than one student in a stall, the automatic suspension, one day or whatever it may be. Sometimes students don't trust the guidance counselor. They need to talk to their own level. And maybe that, and students, they got the bathroom pass, they did, they followed requirements to go to the bathroom. So they didn't skip class. So I just think some of the discipline for students is a little harsh when it comes to, we should be searched. Uh, students get searched, they send to the nurse. The nurse clears them. Their blood pressure's fine, their pupils are fine. Then, so they're cleared. Send them back to class. But no, they then get searched by security. Security clears them. Nothing on them. Send them back to class. But no. Now their personal belongings get searched. That's not even on their persons. It could be on their end of the school. Why is that? If the nurse clears them, the security clears them, why are you going through their personal belongings that aren't even on them for that situation? They could have something personal in those belongings. For their life or for themselves. So I'm not, you know, I just think, uh, maybe I should just re- get together and re-modify that maybe a little bit. Discipline is needed. I'm not saying that, but get together and maybe redo it for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last person that we have signed up for public comment.
And the president?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to potentially end the meeting on a bipartisan note. It is also the birthday of Michael Jack Schmidt, who has done some stuff in this community. So maybe we could also note that in the minutes. Even though I'm a pirate's name.
I was going to say, I think you're kissing up a little. I see the Steelers keychain. Sorry, we still like you. Just a few. Alright, our announcements. We have, uh, we, we are having an executive session held tonight following our school board meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. And our next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Now with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Alright, thank you. We are adjourned.